A quorum of one hundred voters is present. The special town meeting is called to order. This meeting has been called pursuant to warrant dated April 2nd, 2005, duly served and returned. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this special town meeting. My name is Michael Wise. I'm Great Barrington's elected moderator. This may be introductory, but let's please take our seats and get down to business. Fire regulations prohibit standing in the aisles there or in the doorways. The meeting is being recorded by CTSB and I believe by some other media and will be available for viewing later. Please turn off your cell phones. At the table here, we have town clerk Joshua Ryzen, interim town manager Chris Rembold, and a chair for town council David Dineski. David is tied up in traffic someplace around Spring, between Palmer and Springfield and hopes to be here by seven. We'll see. In the meantime, we will, I think we will be able to proceed without him. Anyway, we will try. I'll explain some of the procedure for the meeting, particularly for those who are unfamiliar with it. The town meeting will be governed by the Constitution and laws of Massachusetts and the charter and bylaws of the town of Great Barrington, and town meeting time is the guide for matters of parliamentary procedure. Only registered voters of Great Barrington may vote. Persons who are not Great Barrington voters may address the town meeting with special permission. Three people have been given permission. Some other non-voters have been given permission to sit in this front left section of the auditorium. Motions and amendments must be in writing and must be presented to the moderator and the clerk. If you wish to make a motion or to speak on a motion, to make an amendment to a motion, to make a procedural motion, go to the microphone in the hall and wait to be recognized by the moderator. Be prepared to speak when your turn comes. Please state your name and your voting address and then wait to be recognized. When a motion is made and seconded, the person who made the motion is typically recognized to speak first in support of it. You may speak once on a motion for a time not to exceed three minutes. To be sure we stay on track, I'm using a timer. A warning, as I was on my way here, I discovered that the timer I used to have on this phone didn't work with my upgraded phone, so I downloaded a new one that this is. It's made in Voyage, so if it acts up, I'll be tolerant. It does turn orange when thirty seconds remain and turns red when the three minutes are up. I have granted the proponent of the motions of the articles tonight additional time and given her some permission to spread it around. I'll explain that when we get to that point. Statements should be addressed to the pending motion. Please be considerate and do not repeat items which have been said by other speakers. Questions should be addressed to the moderator, who will try to find the right person to answer them. A motion to call the question, that is, to end debate and move directly to a vote, must be made like any other motion from the microphone that calls for a two-thirds vote. A long colored card has been issued to everybody. Use that card to vote by show of hands and to re-enter the auditorium. To tally the vote by show of hands, a counter has been assigned to each section. The counters will report their numbers from the microphone so that we can add it up and get it in real time. Two colored ballots with yes and no printed on them have also been issued to each voter. If there is a vote by secret ballot, we will use those colored ballots, colored tabs, and I will tell you which color to use. Changing the method of voting on a motion is done by making an incidental motion, also from the microphone. That motion requires a majority vote. In the event of a tie vote, a motion fails, I will not cast a tie-breaking vote. A motion for reconsideration of a vote may be permitted only if made within fifteen minutes after the announcement of the result of the vote. Only one such motion is permitted, per article. We will take up the articles which you received on the way in, in the order they are printed in the warrant. Are two preliminary procedural motions? Is there a motion to dispense with verbatim reading of the warrant?
Still moved.
Second? Is there a second? There is a second. All in favor of dispensing with reading of the warrant?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will dispense with reading the text of the warrant. I will also entertain a motion pursuant to a message of general law that the moderator be allowed to declare a two-thirds vote. This could speed up some procedural matters.
Still moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. If an occasion arises, I will be prepared to do that. Before we begin with the first substantive article, I would like to ask the interim town manager to read a communication we have received from town council. I would have recognized him at this point to do that. It will clarify what is at stake, I think, for tonight's meeting. If you could read both of the items at this point and then it will just show where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Mr. Moderator, I'll be reading a memorandum from town council David Dineski to me dated April 14th. You have requested comment on the effect of an affirmative vote under the two articles on the warrant for this special town meeting, both of which are citizen petition articles. In my opinion, an affirmative vote under either article would be advisory only. Article one, captioned "Acquisition of Husatonic Water Works Company." This article states a request, quote, "in accordance with MA State Statute 1897, Chapter 229, for a special town meeting, for the purpose of acquiring the Husatonic Water Works Company, HWWC, for an amount not to exceed $2.3 million, exclusive of any debt pending or incurred, with the HWWC to then, quote, 'become a division under a consolidated Great Barrington Water District if both acquisitions are approved,' end quote. Town acquisition of the Great Barrington Fire District is proposed under Article two. Article one does not state that appropriation of funds be voted, and it does not specify a funding source for appropriation. The HWWC exists as a private water company pursuant to a special act of the legislature, Chapter 229 of the Acts of 1897. That act states that the town may purchase the HWWC, subject to certain conditions. It provides, in Section six, the following. "The town of Great Barrington shall have the right at any time to take by purchase or otherwise the franchise, corporate property, and all the rights and privileges of said corporation, on payment to said corporation of the actual cost of its franchise, works, and property of all kinds held under the provisions of the Act, including in such cost interest on each expenditure from its date to the date of said purchase or taking, as herein provided, at the rate of five percent per annum," end quote. The, quote, "actual cost" is subject to adjustment based on income of the HWWC and costs of maintaining the company's waterworks as set forth in the Act. A purchase pursuant to the procedure stated in the Act requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. The purchase procedure under the Act calls for a payment, a payment of the, quote, "actual cost" of the HWWC franchise and property, and a computation based on historical expenses of HWWC. There is no other method, purchase method stated in the Act. At present, a computation in the manner directed by the Act has not been performed. A method of purchase different from what is specified in the Act would have to be the subject of negotiation and agreement between the town and HWWC. At present, there is no agreement for such a purchase. Based on the facts and information above, it is my view that an affirmative vote under Article one would be an endorsement of a town purchase of HWWC, but would not create a binding obligation for a purchase to take place as proposed. Moving on to the opinion about Article two, captioned "GBFD Acquisition." This article states a request, quote, "in accordance with MA State Statute 1886, Chapter 311," end quote, "for a special town meeting, quote, 'for the purpose of acquiring the Great Barrington Fire District, GBFD, AKA the Great Barrington Water Company, for an amount not to exceed $2 million,' and further proposes that a consolidated Great Barrington Water District be formed, led by the GBFD, and inclusive of the Husatonic Water Facilities, AKA Husatonic Water Works," end quote. The article does not state that appropriation of funds be voted and does not specify a funding source for appropriation. Chapter 311 of the Acts of 1886 relates to the incorporation of the Berkshire Heights Water Company of Great Barrington, a private company, not the Great Barrington Fire District. The GBFD was established following a vote of town meeting in 1854. A fire district exists as a separate and public legal entity. Fire districts are subject to and governed by certain provisions of Chapter 48 of the general laws. Section 80 of that Chapter 48 states, quote, "Fire districts heretofore legally organized shall continue and be subject to the provisions of this chapter relative to fire districts," end quote. Section 71 of that Chapter 48 provides for election of a prudential committee, which acts as the executive of the district, and Section 66 provides for meetings for conducting the business of the district similar to town meetings in towns. Section 66 specifies that such meetings shall be held, quote, "in pursuance of a warrant under the hands of the prudential committee," end quote. This is the procedure followed by the GBFD. Chapter 48 of the general laws does not include a provision for a town to acquire a fire district, and I am not aware of any other authority in the general laws for such an acquisition. In my opinion, such an acquisition or other joining or incorporation of the Great Barrington Fire District with or into the town would require a special act of the legislature. Therefore, it is my, it is also my opinion that an affirmative vote taken under Article two would be an endorsement of the concept of the town taking over the operation of the GBFD and combining the facilities/operations of the GBFD with the facilities/operations currently controlled by the HWWC, but would not be legal or a binding authority for establishment of such an arrangement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I thought it would be good to set the stage with that opinion at the outset, covering what I think will be the debate interrelated on both items. We are now move to Article one. I've given the proponent permission to take a little more time with this than would be normal and to include references to the issues in Article two because they are in her mind connected. Name and address, please.
Sharon Gregory, 32 Holland Beck Avenue.
To begin with the motion.
Article one, whoops, no, no.
You begin by stating a motion and then discussing it. Your motion is what you sent me the other day.
Moved to have the town of Great Barrington acquire the Husatonic Water Works Company for the amount of zero dollars and not to exceed $2.3 million in total, to own and control the Husatonic Water Works system and all its facilities and property rights. An enterprise fund should be used to separate the water utility from the municipality.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. You're recognized to explain your motion.
Thank you. We are here tonight because for years, Great Barrington residents living in Husatonic have endured water none of us would want coming out of our taps. Out of frustration that nothing has changed in all that time, two petitions were floated to acquire our two independent water companies, the Great Barrington Fire District and the Husatonic Water Works, so that they could be combined under the control of the town. Nearly 300 registered voters signed the petitions. Those became the two articles on tonight's warrant. For the Husatonic Water Works, the select board has an appraised value of $2.3 million. This is public information, so it became the cap in Article one, no more than $2.3 million. Tonight's vote is advisory. It is not binding on the select board. Tonight's vote doesn't handicap the select board in its negotiation because all parties already know the appraised value, but the select board and the Mercers need to hear the town's sentiment, which is why a yes vote for Article one tonight is so important. The Great Barrington Fire District has refused repeatedly to acquire the Husatonic Water Works, even though combining the two entities would save money for water customers. The Fire District has been able to ignore public opinion because it operates independently of the town government. None of our elected officials have any say over it. The solution is to have the town acquire the Fire District and put it under the control of the town. This is the purpose of Article two on tonight's warrant. We propose that the select board consolidate HWW and the Great Barrington Fire District into a single water company under its control. The water company's finances would be managed under an enterprise fund, completely separate from the town's budget. The fund would have two divisions, one for each water company, so that the water customers in each district would pay only for their own operations and upgrades. No one would pay twice, a fear that's being floated. An enterprise fund is a Massachusetts program that separates water utilities from municipal funds. Loans do not count against the town's borrowing limits because enterprise funds are self-funded by its users. If you don't have town water, you don't pay for the new water company. Based on my years of experience in corporate finance and my years as chair of the town's finance committee, I believe the acquisition of the Great Barrington Fire District can be structured so that it won't cost the town anything. To cover, to cover contingencies, though, for Article two, I use the $2 million banked in the district's last public financial statement as the upper limit of the acquisition cost. Obviously, this is negotiable and unlikely to be needed at all. The enterprise fund covering the acquisition of the two water companies would be eligible for grants and low-interest loans that are only available to town-owned facilities. It could issue bonds, among other things. Today, about, today, about half of the $700,000 of annual cost of Husatonic Water Works are used to compensate the two Mercers. Sorry, my printer wasn't working before I left. The red part is about the salaries and benefits, but you can see that the pumping, purification, distribution is on the bottom and the use of consultings on the consultants, lawyers, accountants, and engineers are what, what is used. That money, the money for compensation would go directly into the enterprise fund instead. There would be no profits or incomes, income taxes charged to water customers either, so the cost for users would be far less than the Mercers continue to own, if the Mercers continue to own HWWC. And that would pay for some water operators, too. That's not to say it's zero. Anyway, we already have a, have an example of a town buying the water company from the Mercers. In 1995, the town of Egremont voted in a special town meeting, just like tonight, to acquire their water company, then owned by the Mercers. Egremont opened an enterprise fund, just like we're proposing, so that the water company would not require tax dollars from non-users of the system. Negotiations began and the final vote by residents was taken a few months later. So that's probably a process that we might follow if we have a favorable vote. The price had been set, but on the floor, the Mercers wanted a higher price. The voted, voters rejected that request and the water company was acquired by the town at a fair price. This is a case where Egremont's select board successfully worked with its residents, not chiding them or ridiculing them. Ever since, the Egremont Select Board has successfully managed the town's water department. Similar to the way Egremont was authorized to acquire the water company, the state law that created the Husatonic Water Works in 1884 has a provision that explicitly allows it to be purchased by the Great Barrington. So if the water company and the town cannot agree on the price, a panel of three commissioners appointed by the Supreme Judicial Court will set a fair price, which shall be binding on both parties. That was very comforting to me. I mean, I would never have started this if I didn't think there were an endpoint.
Sharon, you've used seven of your ten minutes so far.
Okay, well, I'll go faster. Thank you. But you did give me one minute to wrap up, so can I just add that to this?
You asked for ten minutes total? You've used seven. It's your choice.
The authority to purchase the Husatonic Water Works is granted by two-thirds vote by the towns, by the town's voters. The water for Husatonic residents is high in magnes and discolors water. Excess levels also pose a threat to child's brain development. People in Husatonic have been exposed to this metal in their water for years, and then there are the disinfectants, which the state laws warn can result in elevated levels of cancer-causing chemicals. As a private water company, Husatonic Water faces millions of dollars of upgrades that will make the system too expensive for taxpayers. As a public-owned company, we can make the system safe and bring down costs dramatically. Representative Lee Davis is working to procure state funding also. People in Husatonic have been listening to promises about merging the two water system for years. They have been waiting for, for relief. The select board members voice concern and nothing happens. They say negotiations are underway, but Jim Mercer says nobody has contacted him. More talk and slow walking, the acquisition won't get us anywhere. We're in danger of getting sidetracked by process and losing sight of the goal. The GBFD is run by a group of five men who don't have to answer to any of the elected officials. This is a club in which two of them have, have family memberships who have held the same job for decades earlier. Doesn't make them a bad, bad people. They just don't bother to post things on a timely manner, on financial matters, and they can borrow money virtually with no public oversight and bury the repayment cost in our annual real estate tax bills. The average water bill for households in Great Barrington is $900 a year and represents 10% on top of our real estate taxes. Most people have no idea of the true costs they're paying. No wonder the Fire District Board members oppose any challenge to their power. You probably got an alarming letter from the water department. The Fire District claiming that support for tonight's two warrants means that all taxpayers and water customers will be supporting twice the operating costs. This is not true. Under the town-operated enterprise fund that I've described, with a separate division for each of the water companies, the users will only pay for what they use. So the Great Barrington GBFD is a closed, entrenched system, and this has to change. HWW and Great Barrington Fire District should be merged and managed with full transparency and accountability to the public under the control of the select board. The Eagle has endorsed this...
Thank you very much. That is your ten minutes. I'll give you thirty seconds to finish. I'll give you thirty more seconds.
I'll just, I'll do my wrap up right now. Voting yes tonight on the two articles sends a message to the Mercers and our select board that we are fed up with delay and inaction. The people of Husatonic deserve to have the same water quality that the rest of us enjoy. We are a single community and equals, not a place where third of the town are second-class citizens. It's just not fair. We have smart people working for the town. We have access to good legal services. There are grants, low-cost loans, and services available from the state. With all these resources, we can create a solution that serves all Great Barrington water customers at reasonable cost. Please vote yes on both articles. Thank you.
There are connections, obviously, between them, but I'd like to focus the debate right now on the first article, which concerns Husatonic Water Works, if that is possible. Anybody who would like to speak to this, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Take it up a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Benner Jimin Elliott, 208 Pleasant Street, Husatonic. Husatonic Water Works customer and member of the Great Barrington Select Board. I want to thank you for being here tonight, everyone, and I'd like to thank the people who put this petition together for bringing us here tonight. I've heard a couple different reasons for this petition being put together, but the most consistent one I've, have heard is to have a conversation, and I am grateful to be here tonight talking about Husatonic Water with all of you. I want to take a moment, though, to talk about impact versus intent, because I agree with the intent of this petition. I agree that this town should acquire the Water Works, that we should operate it as a public utility, and that ultimately having one yard of water utility for both Great Barrington and Husatonic is the equitable and efficient thing to do. That's all good stuff. Unfortunately, the impact of this petition puts all of those goals in danger. Let's look at Article two. First, we don't need to acquire the Fire District to acquire and operate the Water Works, and the fact that the statute cited in this petition doesn't even contain the charter for the Fire District means it wouldn't hold up to a legal challenge. And if the intended impact of Article one is to set the town on a path to own the Water Works, I'm here to say we are already on that path. I understand there's some confusion on this, so I'd like to talk about what we've done over the last two years. In 2023, the select board voted to explore the financial viability of operating this system as a public utility, a process that dragged on for ten months because of obstruction by Water Works ownership. When that was complete, we voted to obtain special counsel to negotiate the purchase, counsel who is now engaging Husatonic Water Works, to sit down at the table. We have started the negotiation process. We are on the path to acquiring the Water Works and developing an affordable, sustainable way to run it as a public utility, and this petition would introduce unnecessary complications that risk our ability to put together a good, clean deal. By invoking the original charter, we introduce a vaguely worded formula that relies on 150 years of financial statements, data that we don't have, to determine the value. And I know that I don't like going into a negotiation announcing my cap offer, and that's exactly what this petition would do. It would pay a large $2.3 million on our attorney's forehead as he's sitting down at the table. So it's no surprise that Husatonic Water Works ownership is in fever of this petition. It provides them with a toolbox worth of leverage they wouldn't have without it. And I will say this, they are pretty good at manipulating the legal system. In fact, they might be better at doing that than running a water company. So all of that is why I'm not voting yes tonight, but I also don't want to vote no, because while the execution is flawed, again, the intent is good. And rather than taking a vote that says this town doesn't support the people of Husatonic, I would like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone Article one, to allow our attorney to conduct clean negotiations so the select board can bring... to conduct clean negotiations so the select board can bring a comprehensive, detailed plan for the town to vote at a later date.
Most of them made in seconded. That is a debatable motion. The motion on the floor is whether to postpone formal action on the motion, principal motion, indefinitely. I will accept debate on either that motion or on the principal motion at this point.
Thank you.
More in quickly, 70.
The motion is to table in effect Article One only, that's right.
So water is an essential part of our health and well-being and life. Our body is made up, our body is made up of 60%.
Name and address of the speaker, please.
I did. More in quickly, 70 Post Street.
Thank you.
Our body is made up of 60% of water. The longer we wait for citizens to have safe, clean, and affordable drinking water, the more the overall cost will be to your wallet. Look at the whole picture. When our health and well-being are affected, it's increasing our overall healthcare expenditures, which ultimately we pay for through taxes, high insurance premiums, and the pain of watching loved ones sick. Water infrastructures across America are in trouble. They are outdated, contaminated, and pose high risks to our health. Around 30 years ago, U.S. Healthcare ranked number 34 compared to other countries. We still rank in the 30s. We have to start investing and taking seriously what is the essential to life: clean, safe drinking water and improving our public health infrastructure. As per the policy position statement that was posted on Husatonic Water Works Company website, they recognize that transitioning to public ownership of the water system is not only logical, it's the most sustainable and equitable path forward to meet current and future water infrastructure needs. They are committed to doing their part to ensure a successful transition. This shift makes more sense now than ever before. So unlike private utilities that rely on traditional commercial loans, public entities, and access to subsidized funding and sources, and low-interest loans through the state revolving funds and federal infrastructure programs. The answer is simple per them. It will unlock resources and structural advantages that a small private utility like HWW cannot access. The town will benefit from avoiding steep rate hikes and access to grants and low-interest loans. Together, this benefits, these benefits represent a brighter and more stable future for our water. With HWD, we can address longstanding infrastructure needs, improve water quality and reliability, and protect affordability under local leadership. So in lieu of that, I would like to thank Mr. Mercer for his vote in yes to this. And also, rumor has it that because of the lack of integrity and all of the things that have happened to community members, there is favorable chance that he could, he could donate it to the town. Thank you, Mr. Mercer. Vote yes.
Before we proceed, there is a motion pending, which is, by the rules, a higher-ranking motion to postpone this matter indefinitely. I'll entertain debate right now on the narrow procedural question. Should we postpone debate on this indefinitely, or should we move to?
I'll speak to the narrow motion to postpone, and I suggest that we not postpone. We're all here tonight. It costs $6,000 to set up a town meeting. Let's save the next $6,000. This is giving, this is giving our select board permission. Think of it as prior authorization. When you need to see a doctor, the insurance company often has to say, okay. This is the town saying, okay. It's not binding. It's expressing a sentiment. It's bringing the community together. It's very impressive.
Pardon me? Your name and address, please.
Oh, my golly. Donna Jacobs, 260 Park Street. Pardon me. Okay. I think it's great seeing everybody out here tonight. I don't see why we have to go home and come out again. Let's get the job done tonight. Give the select board the permission to go ahead and negotiate anywhere from $0 to $2.3 million, but I know, I have a feeling that Jim's considering a donation to this town that has done well by him. Thank you.
Again, debate on the question whether to postpone the decision.
Trevor Forbes, 325 North Plain Road, and I'll speak to the narrow amendment. Rather as Donna has just mentioned, this has been going on far too long, and I think anybody, particularly those from the press, should be really impressed by the vast number of people that have turned up for this meeting. In the 15 years that I've been in Great Barrington, I have never seen a meeting as well-attended as this. This should speak to the passion that has been aroused by this, and this is why you can't go for an extended amendment again. We've been doing this for the best part of 40 years. People have been discussing this particular issue. We need to get this done. Thank you.
Any further discussion on whether we should postpone indefinitely? Seeing none, I'll take a vote on that. All in favor?
Vote favor of what?
We're already voting, buddy. Get a little faster.
Favor of what? Favor of what?
I'm asking for a vote on the procedural motion, whether to postpone the matter indefinitely. Please raise your hands if you're in favor of this procedural motion. Thank you. Those opposed? We vote that the motion to postpone indefinitely fails. We will continue debate on the main motion at this point. Speakers, go to the microphone, please, and identify yourself. Motion failed at 6:37.
Eric Gabriel, 1052 Main Street, Husatonic. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I would like to thank Sharon, Donna, and everybody that worked hard on this petition and all the, all the research they did, and I really appreciate it. Although we might not exactly agree on this issue, I truly appreciate the conversation and the attention that has shined on our town's problem. Our central issue, as most know, is clear, clean, and safe drinking water for Husatonic Water customers. Husatonic Water needs to become a public entity. There is no, there is zero doubt about that. Our water supply should never be controlled by a private corporation or any other form of business. It needs to be owned by the people of the town. I'm proud to say Great Barrington is my hometown, and I could not be more proud to say that I grew up and still reside in the section of Great Barrington we call Husatonic. And here are the facts that I would like to state tonight to my fellow Husatonic Water customers. We hear you loud and clear, and I ask that you give the select board more time and let the negotiations play out as they are underway. This issue weighs heavily on me. We will solve this problem, but we do not need our friends and neighbors that use Great Barrington Fire District to fear their situation. We want them rooting for us, not worrying about what's going to happen to their own supply, their own management, and their own cost. Just like to point out another fact. Buddy Atwood, his salary for the fire district for the last few years has been exactly $0.0 Mr. Atwood's been taking a lot of shrapnel these past few months. I just felt that that should be pointed out. We will be back here, and we will be discussing the future of our water, but tonight is not the night to make these sort of votes. Thank you.
I'll buy hearing from somebody who hasn't spoken yet.
Ruby Chang, 253 Long Pond. I wanted to really feel that the whole town is quite aware of our situation. What I wanted to repeat is 2003, we have a swap report from the Mass DEP, which said that the Great Barrington Fire District has a susceptibility of high for problems with the water. So I want to keep that in attention, and I think that the town really should have a water commission that takes care of both water systems, and then they should be held accountable to provide water indefinitely in light of PFAS situations across the state, as well as getting grants that would be appropriate under our budget constraints. I think you have to look at the bigger picture of climate change and sustainability, and we're riding on the high risk that our water source can be contaminated without a second source. And that is a huge problem that is the elephant in the room that nobody is talking about. And this is an advisory vote to start that process, and I want everybody to think about their children, their grandchildren, their property values, and really think about the future of our town. Thank you.
Trevor Forbes, 325 North Plain Road. I don't really have very much to add to Ruby's comments. I do note that the Constitution of Massachusetts says, by its amendment of 1972, "The people shall have the right to clean air and water," and that refers to drinking water. What we heard tonight, and I'm sure I'm not the only person in this room who recognized it, was a comment from a member of the select board asking us to defer yet again. This has been deferred for years. We need to get this done, and a vote yes will actually set that in motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I see one more speaker. Go ahead.
Kate Van Olst, 24 Hart Street, Husatonic. Some of you may be familiar with me as a longtime resident of the town. Some of you may have seen myself and my son on the cover of the Boston Globe a few months ago as part of an investigative journalism study that focused and brought national media attention to this water problem that we're having. What I've heard today is the opinion of our town council, that neither of these articles would be essentially binding. And the other thing that I've heard today is the opinion of our select board members that they hear us and they are working through the official channels by having put in motion studies and also hired a legal firm experienced in the purchase of water companies to the same end that this Article One and Article Two would go towards. What I'm hearing specifically is that Article One, by including the state statute from 1897, would make that process extremely complicated versus the method of the select board hire negotiator. And I'm hearing that by putting the $2.3 million cap on it, it could also make the negotiation process complicated. So I have a question and then a motion. One thing that we've, we're talking about here is the speed at which this might happen. Some folks hope that by voting yes on these articles tonight, that the wheels will be set in faster motion. The select board certainly has wheels in motion, although sometimes the wheels of government turn slowly. There is one person here tonight, Treasurer Jim Mercer, if you'd like to come down and just give us a price or a donation.
Questions? We'll address the moderator, please. Do you would like to hear from Mr. Mercer?
I would. That could just save all of us some time, money, and effort. We could giddy up and get going.
Do you have anything else you want to say?
I do. I would like to make a motion to amend Article One to strike the reference to the state statute from 1897 and the dollar amount of $2.3 million.
Let me correct. The motion does not include the statute. The motion on the floor does not mention the statute.
The motion was to pass Article One?
No, the motion was more, was simpler than that. The motion does include a dollar figure. So the motion, you don't need to make a motion to eliminate the statutory reference. It's not in the motion.
Okay.
But if you'd like to amend it to eliminate the dollar amount, is that your motion?
Sure.
Could you have that in writing, please? I need to have that in writing.
Do you have a pen?
No.
I did what you did. It's in writing right here. Oh, this late? What's your name?
Ellen Lar.
Great. Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
Please bring it down here and give it to the clerk.
I'm Ellen Lar.
I would like to motion in my hands and in the clerk's hands on paper. That's what it means by in writing.
Here, keep your, keep those.
The motion is to delete the term not to exceed $2.3 million. I can read that from it. There's an amendment on the floor now to delete the reference $2.3 million from the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. We'll debate the amendment. Any one who would like to speak on the amendment? You've already used up about two, three minutes. So if somebody else would like to speak on it?
I just wanted to, Sharon Gregory, 32 Hollenbeck. The motion that I spoke to on the screen is actually the motion, what they had before was an old motion, and I cleared with the moderator that it was all right. So that's the real motion on the floor.
The real motion on the floor at the moment is to delete from your motion the number $2.3 million, okay? Any further debate on deleting the dollar amount from the main motion? Please get to the microphone.
Denise Forbes, 325 North Plain Road. By deleting that $2.3 million, that means that you're opening it up so it could go even higher. Why would you do that? What, what's the sense in that?
And in fact, as you make that point, I would, since the town council isn't here, he didn't grab me. The fact that the warrant stated the dollar amount could make a motion on the floor with a different dollar amount higher than that beyond the scope of the warrant.
Exactly. So why would you take it out? I, I vote to put it back in.
It isn't out yet. It isn't out yet.
It's not out yet. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on deleting the dollar amount?
Kate Van Olst, 24 Hart Street, again.
One minute.
Similar to, as Ben Elliott had made a motion to postpone it indefinitely, to my thinking, what it would do was show, passing Article One without the dollar amount specifically would be a show of overwhelming support for a town purchase of the Water Works, but without potentially interfering with negotiations being done officially on the town's behalf.
Okay, I'm going to stretch a bit. Because the council, council has advised that the vote would be advisory, I'm not going to draw real square corners about the absence, about the possibility of a deal for more than the dollar amount in the warrant article, which is, by the way, what you're opening up. So I will allow a vote in the amendment. The amendment is to delete the dollar amount from the motion is, no further debate. All in favor of the amendment, raise your cards. All opposed, raise your cards. Amendment fails. If there's no further debate on the main motion, we'll move to a vote on the main motion. Seeing nobody scrambling to the microphone, the vote on this requires, somebody is walking to the microphone.
Well, I don't want to say anything.
Okay, thank you.
No, not about the amendment.
Because the effect, according to council, is advisory, the cognitive vote is a simple majority. Now, if there is somebody- Now, if there is somebody in here who wants us to count the vote to find out whether it's two-thirds, let me know right now. Seeing none, all in favor of the main motion, raise your cards. For the motion to succeed, to succeed right now requires only a simple majority because it's advisory. Now, the organizers have asked for two-thirds vote for reasons which actually aren't legally relevant, but they might want to see. Now, if there is a desire for a counted vote, somebody please make a motion to that effect.
A vote!
Motion has been made for a counted vote. Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor of having a counted vote, raise your cards.
Please take the motion before calling the vote.
I will. All those opposed to having a counted vote? Okay, but the motion to have a counted, I hear you, the motion to have a counted vote succeeds, we will take a counted vote on the following motion, and I'll read it to Moved to have the town of Great Barrington acquire the Housatonic-
Excuse me, moderator.
Yes.
Maureen Quigley, 70 Post Street. Can I ask that the, the vote is done secretly?
You, you have not begun to vote yet, so you may make that motion. You want to move for a secret ballot?
Yes.
There's a motion has been made for a secret ballot, which I guess I can entertain, even though we've just decided not to do that. I will. All right, is there a second for a secret ballot?
Second.
All in favor of having a secret ballot, raise your cards. All opposed? Motion fails, we will not have a secret ballot. We will have a counted vote. Let me return. Since no votes were cast yet, I can still do this. The motion was moved to have the town of Great Barrington acquire the Housatonic Waterworks Company for the amount of $0 and not to exceed $2.3 million in total to own and control the Housatonic Waterworks System and all its facilities and property rights, period. An enterprise fund should be used to separate the water utility from the municipality. Would the tellers please go to your places so you can count the votes? This may take a little while because we do have a very good crowd tonight.
Can I hold my spot in line?
Sure. All in favor, please raise your cards and hold them up so that the tellers can tell. We are voting on the motion I just read to you. This is the, this is the motion under Article One. This is the motion that Sharon made under Article One, which concerns the acquisition of the Housatonic Waterworks. I'll read it for a third time. Listen carefully, please. The motion you are about to vote on is moved to have the town of Great Barrington acquire the Housatonic Waterworks Company for the amount of $0 and not to exceed $2.3 million in total to own and control the Housatonic Waterworks System and all its facilities and property rights. An enterprise fund should be used to separate the water utility from the municipality. That is the motion on the floor on which you are now voting. Those in favor of the motion, raise your cards and keep them up so that the tellers Keep them up until you're really sure that they've been counted. Tellers can wave to your section when you're done. I can't see in the back. Are we done in the back up top counting? I believe we are. Okay, pick your cards out. Keep them up unless you know your teller is done. Tellers, when you are done, come down to the microphone, please. Okay, could the tellers please report from the microphone your totals?
25 yes, 25 no.
26 yes, 35 no.
26 yes, 35 no.
4 yes, 40 no.
4 yes, 40 no.
41 yes, 75 no.
41 yes, 75 no.
44 yes, 66 no.
44 yes, 66 no. By my count, the yeses are 140 and the noses are 241. The motion fails at two minutes before seven. We'll move on now to Article Two, which requires a motion. Sharon, are you going to make the motion?
Can I just say something first or no?
Yes, you may. There's no motion on the floor. You may say something.
My name is Laura Kiefner. I live at 7 Reed Street in Great Barrington, and I think Sharon Gregory owes the Prudential Committee and the workers of the Great Barrington Fire District an apology for standing up here and saying that nobody goes to their meetings or whatever. I used to be, worked for them. I was a treasurer at one point. And meetings were always posted on, in the newspaper, they were posted in town hall, they were posted on bills. People knew about them. Nobody just didn't care to come to the meetings. We used to have to go to the fire department to get a quorum sometimes. But no matter what, those guys and that Prudential Committee bust their butts making sure that we've got the best system in town. And she owes an apology. I adore every one of them, and they are such hard workers. And for her to stand here and say that no meetings were posted and nobody knew about them is a lie.
Thank you. I hope there begins to debate on the next item. Is there a motion on the floor, please? I'm looking for a motion on Article Two.
Given that permission was given to this woman to speak freely, I wonder if I might also?
To what purpose?
To, um, speak on, I'm Donna Jacobs at 260 Park Street, and I'd like to speak on behalf of Sharon Gregory, who has worked very hard to find a way to structure a financial system so that we can afford and own and operate our water in Housatonic. We have an excellent team with the Fire District. I agree, they do a wonderful job, and I think they are a marvelous resource who could help the whole town have clean water, not just part of the town. That's my comment.
Thank you. I believe we are balanced right now. I would like to continue with the motion on Article Two.
Can I comment as well, please? Thank you.
I'd rather not. If it's relevant to the next article, which is all about the Great Barrington Fire District-
I'll be very quick. 70 Post Street, Maureen Quigley. I want to thank the GBFD and all of their hard work and everything that they've done. Their talent and expertise is greatly appreciated, and it's part of the reason why we want to welcome them onto the committee, because they've done such an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to business. A motion, please, on Article Two.
Motion, Article Two. Moved to have the town of Great Barrington acquire by merger the Great Barrington Fire District, which means transferring the assets and liabilities into the town enterprise fund. And I'd just like to make one-
Is there a second for that motion?
Seven seconds.
Okay, you may explain your motion, but you've used up all of your time, so-
I know, but so 15 seconds.
Okay, there you go.
I just wanted to say, I didn't say that, I was looking down, I said, it wasn't, the financials weren't posted regularly, but I have high regard for the Great Barrington Fire District. I just don't feel that the structure, the legal structure helps to maximize their, um, their leadership. And actually, I think they want, I want them to be promoted up to oversee all of Great Barrington's water. Thank you.
Walter Atwood, 370 Maple Avenue, Chairman of the Great Barrington Fire District. The only thing I can say is that we'll most likely see you in court. Thank you.
Okay, it was pithy, buddy, whatever that was. Is there any further debate on this item?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, I'm Volger, 253 Long Pond Road. I think the motion should be voted on mainly because the Great Barrington Fire District is a dinosaur. It's been around for a long time. And I'm, everyone's gonna say, no, it wasn't. Well, if you look through it historically, you'll find that they were set up originally to deal for being the fire department. The fire department became part of the town, and based upon what I've looked through, I don't know of any other town this size in the entire Commonwealth where we have a private service that builds through the town, who acts like they're not part of the town. That little handout I got in the mail suggested that we're an entity, governmental entity, but we're not part of the government. That's not bright. Either you are or you're not. And I think the second motion is to really say, when it was made a water entity during the depression times, a lot of water companies were failing, and the Commonwealth just wanted to keep these companies afloat long enough so everybody could get organized and make things work. At this point, several times over, historically over the past 50 years, people have tried to say it's not appropriate to keep it as a private group, getting loans like it's a town group. So I think things should change, move forward. There's no reason other than them wanting to stay in control of their little piece of pie here, and the town would be much better off having one water company. It can have two separate components, but realistically, we stand as the only town in the whole Commonwealth where we have a private entity that the Mercers run, and we have a private company that is labeling itself as a governmental entity. It just doesn't compute. It's time to move forward to 21st century and leave the history behind, because it wasn't very good here. Thank you.
To clarify, for what it is worth, the Fire District is not a private stock company. It is, in fact, a public organization.
Right, but it's not owned by the government.
Any further debate on this motion?
Ellen Lar, 208 Pine Street, Housatonic. I think part of the underlying sentiment here is that we want the Great Barrington Fire District to help all of us in the community with their expertise in running a really strong water system. So while I support the motion, I think it's premature because we didn't vote on the other one. And again, it's a business negotiation. I'm not sure we should insert ourselves into, but I think it would be a very positive thing for the community and for Housatonic residents if the Great Barrington Fire District and the town could come to some sort of a mutual agreement where they would take leadership role here. We need them. We need their expertise. Thank you.
You?
Hi, Donna Jacobs, 260 Park Street. I'd like to echo the comments of the speaker before me. I do agree that we need as much expertise in town as we can get. I think Sharon Gregory has, has offered her services voluntarily as someone well-versed and experienced in matters of finance and corporate structure. Having said that, and expressing my respect for the Great Barrington Fire District team, I'm saddened to hear Walter Atwood threaten us with a lawsuit if this vote is passed. I know that if citizens were to say, okay, we're not going to pay Housatonic Waterworks anymore for our water, we're going to put it in an escrow fund and deal with that. And we'll have a water rescue escrow fund that can be used when we have access to the utility and we can put the funds into the utility. We could also say to Great Barrington, we're not going to pay our taxes. Why should we pay our taxes when we can't even get basic fundamental services? If Mr. Atwood wants to threaten citizens with a lawsuit for simply wanting what is our right, clean water, I think we can threaten the town with non-payment of taxes and non-payment of water bills. I do believe that wouldn't be right. I think this town needs to work together. Citizens need to work with government, and neighbors don't need to be pitted against one another. I hope we leave tonight feeling that we've all come out, this is a big community, we all care passionately, and I hope that we feel by the time we leave that we can care about each other and respect each other and not threaten with lawsuits or withholding payments to government and water.
Raymond Murray, 14 Hemlock Hill Road in Great Barrington. I agree with the previous speaker that the threat of a lawsuit may have been ill-advised in that virtually everyone in the audience here is very supportive of the Fire District and Water Company. I think what he was referencing is the fact that there's no legal mechanism available that we're aware of for the town to take it over. And so I think that was the point. If you want to take us over, go ahead and sue, because there is no mechanism to do that. But I also agree that a threat of a lawsuit was not particularly helpful. Thank you.
So, so Sheila and I am up here. I didn't hear what Buddy said. Maybe I'm better off that way.
Maureen Quigley, 70 Post Street. I just want to say to the whole community that this whole process was well thought out with the intention to have an overall cost-effective savings to everyone of Great Barrington and the village of Housatonic. When you merge companies, it creates the ability to, sorry, to save money from larger loans, contracts, and terms, backup personnel and systems, town oversight and water, over our water rates. So it's really in the best good for the public interest and that the town can get loans that are at a low rate. I don't understand why any water user would want to pay a higher loan rate on their water bill when that can be completely prevented. So if Mr. Atwood has the best interest of the community at large, and he's a man of integrity, of what I've heard, then I would think that he would want the best for everyone in the community. And if that means it saves on the pocketbook, then that is what counts.
You've already had your shot to debate, Buddy, but I think you want to make a motion, yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we, motion to postpone to an indefinite date.
Motion has been made to postpone action on this motion indefinitely, which by the old-fashioned means is table. Motion has been made and seconded. This is debatable. Does anybody want to debate whether we want to work on this anymore tonight? whether we want to work on this anymore tonight? Seeing none. All in favor of postponing indefinitely, which will finish business on this. Put your cards down. All opposed? Motion carries. That is postponed indefinitely. There is no further business on the warrant. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting. So a little second. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. See you in two weeks.